We will call the board, Single Metropolitan Transit Commission Board is now in session. It's 4:00 P. M. On Monday, November 18th. I'll let the record reflect that everyone is here with the exception of Wake Park. Mayor Miller is absent, otherwise everyone is here. And we have agenda before us. First, are there any changes or additions? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved, and then we will go on to the consent agenda consisting of items five through eight. On there, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries open forum, is there anyone here or online?
No.
No?
I fell asleep on that one.
All right. We'll move right then to general business, item number nine, introduction. I gotta go to my glasses. Oh, all right, we have a new finance director here. That's important, that's the most important, yeah. Well, welcome, so we'll turn it over to Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair. Commissioners, I'd like to introduce to you our new finance director, Nene Israel. Has over ten years of finance experience, most recently was the finance director for the Duluth Transit Authority, and prior to that was the accountant-manager for Minnesota Valley Transit Authority down in Bradsville, Minnesota, and prior to that, worked in budgeting with the Minnesota Department of Transportation, dealing with grants just for the state, for the state of Minnesota. So really excited to have Nene join our team. Also nationally, she is currently on the Transportation Research Board on the finance panel, but the panel is geared to looking at best practices with regards to finance management, looking at grants and industry best practices which relates to transportation, finance, and governance. So happy to have Nene sit on that national board representing Metrobus, and want to bring that knowledge back to us so we could continue to stay ahead of industry best practices. So with that, and then also part of the treasurer for Compto, Minnesota, so Compto, the Conference of Minority Transportation Officials, but we actually have a chapter here in Minnesota, and Nene's the treasurer for the state, for Compto, Minnesota State, and she likes to say no a lot, so, you know, hopefully she'll continue to say no at Metrobus, you know, when it comes to certain things, but we're just happy.
You've got a board that says no to any spending any money. Well, welcome, Director Israel.
Just happy to have you.
Is it Nene?
Nene.
Nene, okay. Well, welcome, you want to say anything? Is there any direction?
No, I'm happy to be here, looking forward to helping St. Cloud advance their project, their financial, and get into the 21st century when it comes to financial software.
Well, thank you, and welcome.
We're in the 18th century, but, you know.
Welcome to the board of St. Cloud Metrobus. We'll go on to number 10. Oh, is that yours?
I mean, you can read it.
Oh, that's all right.
So commissioners, during the MIBDA conference that was held in Mankato here last month, October 2024, we had a 2024 Annual Public Transportation Association Conference, known as MIBDA. So during that award ceremony, MIBDA honored St. Cloud Mayor and Board Chair Dave Kleis as a Friend of Transit Award. So basically, this award is dedicated to Dave Kleis for his leadership commitment to improve the quality of lives for Minnesotans due to expansion of quality public transit services. So Dave wasn't there to receive the award, so as a result, I was able to accept the award on his behalf. So I have the award here, and they like to take pictures, so I will see Kelly here, I mean, I will see Nate here, but we can take some pictures, but just like to, behalf of Metrobus and on behalf of MIBDA, like to present you with this Friends of Transit Award 2024.
Thank you, appreciate that. Appreciate that, and you cashed the check, did that come with like a $5,000?
I could give you my gas mileage.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I saw that on there.
I appreciate that, yeah, we can take a photo after.
Okay.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Just remember, we were talking ahead of time, I think I'm the longest-serving board member.
At Metrobus.
Obviously, because I've been here since the beginning, so, was it 12 years now?
Like 12, I think it's close.
But thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for what you do, and to fellow commissioners.
I was 10 when I got on the board, so.
He's just a young retiree.
Yeah.
We'll go on to item number 11, then, Resolution 2025.01, designating the official depository as newspaper, St. Cloud Metro Transit. Your first job.
Question. Commissioners, in your pocket, you will find a resolution designating St. Cloud Times as the official newspaper and Wells Fargo as the official bank. This is a housekeeping item that is presented to the board every November. No changes, let me know if you have any questions.
And I know we talked a little bit last time, but there, you know, publications are so different now, and we have St. Cloud Live, we've got radio, and I don't know, I know the legislature's always talked about changing, and I know they changed a little bit if it's necessary to do that, because obviously there's an expense to do that, but how many people actually get each of those publications, and particularly, not disparaging any newspaper, but a lot of folks in our areas, I think, all get different correspondence, so is there this, and I have no problem proving this, but is there a way we can look maybe into a little bit more? And I know the League of Minnesota Cities has always pushed to try to not have or have something that, since we all have, most people get their information from our websites anyway, and really don't, you know, need to push that out if there's a way in the future. I don't even, what's the dollar amount we spend annually with all the notifications?
Except is a DVE report posted for a requisition, I don't believe it's over $500.
Okay. I know the city of St. Cloud spends a lot, because we have every single council meeting every, all the minutes, and.
And we've had a similar conversation in Sartell of what is the right outlet to actually, like, prudently get the information out, not just check a box. We haven't come to a resolution on that yet either. I think we stuck with the St. Cloud Times.
We're fortunate, we have the Sauk Rapids Herald.
Oh, yeah.
But for how long? The way newspapers go, they've been around a long time, but it's free, so everybody gets it.
Yeah, how many people read that?
Yeah.
I suppose we get sticked with the obituaries, that's, that we know. Yeah, well, thank you. Any discussion or motion for this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move to the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, and then 12, consideration of long-range transit plan, Metrobus Forward. So we have Paul Loody online, who's from Nelson Nygaard. Paul, can you go ahead and share your screen?
Yes. One second here. Can you all hear me okay, or so?
Yep.
Okay.
So as you're aware, commissioners, this has kind of been a very lengthy undertaking, and obviously, you've been involved since day one, and so this is kind of the final result of multiple steps, outreach, feedback from the public, from our employees, as well as Paul and his team putting together data and analyzing our current system, so this is kind of the final outcome of that, that, given your approval today, we will look to move forward to implementing here in the next year, year and a half. It also includes some very lengthy priorities for the future as well, kind of listed in priority order for us to move forward as we decide on, is it going to be a phase two, phase three, phase four, you know, what is that going to look like? So certainly, this will guide us for probably the next eight to 10 years into the future, so.
All yours, Paul.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, commissioners, thank you very much. Again, for those of you I think I've met, or at least talked with all of you, my name's Paul Loody with Nelson Nygaard, we were the prime consultant on Metrobus Forward or the Long Range Transit Plan. We did have a team, so Esther F. was on our team, we also did some data collection and other things, and other folks have helped us, but we're the, and I would say the other part of the team is the Metrobus staff, who has helped us through this project. So I've got a fairly brief presentation today that's going to walk you through the final report of Metrobus Forward, we do have a sense, and it should be in your pocket, this is kind of an executive summary, I would say, it's a long executive summary, there are other elements of the plan, which we've got kind of an existing conditions report, we've done some survey analysis, and that's in an appendix, and, so we've got a few appendix materials, so the document that we sent you is kind of what I'm going to summarize today and walk you through, and I think you've seen a lot of this, so this is some, I would say, sort of a refinement, kind of a sharpening of the pencil in terms of the recommendations. So I'll take you through the study update and overall of what we've done in the project, and I won't go into an exhaustive detail, I promise, and then we'll spend most of, most of my presentation will be on kind of reviewing the final recommendations, and talk a little bit then about the implementation schedule, what comes next, and next steps. So this was a great photo from our planning workshop that we did back in November, and it was really fun, really helped us kind of through the setting priorities and understanding, you know, some of the needs, and helping us identify some different strategies before we kind of refined that down into the recommendations. So it's been a fairly long project, we started this back in May of 2023, we've done a lot of work related to stakeholder involvement all the way throughout, actually, that line really should be kind of throughout the entire project, to be honest, we've done a lot of stakeholder involvement throughout, we've met with Stakeholder Advisory Committee four times, but we did a lot of surveying early on in the project, we did existing conditions work early on in the project, and then we moved into developing some alternatives, and what, how, what are some different ways that, based on the feedback that we're getting from the community and from riders and some of the data that we're looking at, and then what are some options for making improvements or making changes? And so those kind of get refined, and we go back to the community, went back to them with a second survey, and we went back to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee a second time, third time, and through that process, then we've refined that down to what we're recommending. So this has been a long process, and we also did a FAIR study, which I won't get into much of the details, but some, I would say, fairly minor changes to the FAIR structure, and I believe we talked about that the last time. So I'm going to focus most of the presentation today on the service recommendations and what comes next. But before we do that, this is, Dave kind of mentioned this, that we did do a state of the system report, we did a FAIR analysis, we collected a lot of data of just, it was kind of detailed ridership data, that was one of the things we were waiting for, so the Metrobus has new automatic passenger counters, which gives us that, really, that ability to be able to pinpoint where people are using the system and how they're using it, when they're using it, so it's really critical to this process and to the project. The engagement with the stakeholders, with the community, with staff, with your riders, that was another really big piece of this, and then the draft and final service recommendations. So those are kind of the three pieces that are being fit together into what we're calling Metrobus Forward, kind of the long-range plan. The engagement, as I mentioned, was quite robust, we did a, we had a website that served us throughout the project, did community surveys, we did two of them, one in the fall, one in the summer, and the summer one was really focused on refining those recommendations. And recklessly, about the same amount of people responded, but it wasn't the same exact people, I doubt it, but kind of, that's a fair amount of responses to get on a survey that is asking people to look at service changes and the difference and getting their feedback on that, so that was, I felt like that was pretty, pretty good, and then in addition to that, your riders, we got about 500 of your existing riders, that's a pretty strong sample of your, how people are using the system. So those surveys were really critical to the process, we did a lot of pop-up events and tabling events throughout the project, as I mentioned, the planning game workshop, and then we had the standing, the Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting, which we met with, committee, which we met with four times. So that just gives you a little bit of background into how we got to where we're at, I'm happy to go back and answer any of those questions that you might have about that, but I didn't want to spend most of the time on the recommendations, so there, this kind of breaks it down into eight key themes, and then I'll walk you through the details. So the big theme is really focusing on getting frequency back on corridors, so rather than mostly hourly service that you have now on most of your routes, getting that back to 30-minute service as much as we can, given the constraints that we have in terms of budget. So that was one of the big things, was focusing on frequency, and that was one of the things that the riders and stakeholders and the community surveyed, that was one of the things they really focused on. Operating direct and bidirectional service, so that was another key feature, it's like making it more usable and connecting destinations and doing it sort of in a way that's less, that's less circuitous and more focused and more direct. Reallocating some of your service is another thing, so focusing the, if you're spending the same amount of resources on one or two passengers, could you spend those resources more effectively to serve 10 or 15? So reallocating those services away from those areas that have very little or no ridership to places where we think those resources can be more effectively used. In this, these recommendations, these are the initial recommendations, were maintaining the same hours of service, so we'd like to expand the amount of service hours that Metrobus has provided, but at the moment, we're sort of constrained, so we're keeping service hours the same. The other next couple of things were related to the way that people travel, so things have really changed, not just in the last five years, but really over the past 15 or 20 years in terms of how people are traveling as the region continues to grow, so focusing a bit more on some crosstown connections, so that not everything has to go into and out of downtown St. Cloud. The other thing is focusing on some on-demand service, and there are opportunities to provide service, coverage-based service without using a big bus, and doing it on a fixed route that may not be as efficient and effective in some parts of the region. And the other big piece is the Western Transit Center, so there was now new Transit Center coming online, so we needed to think about, well, how does the fixed route network function or serve that new Transit Center? And then we also wanted to, this kind of pulls it all together, is to develop a baseline network that could then be expanded on. So we're starting from a reduced scenario, kind of like where you're operating your service now, how can you, how can we restructure the system a little bit and then build on that over time? So those are the key themes of the, of the recommendations. We, I won't spend much time on this, but we did do a recommendation survey over the summer, and it kind of asked them, you know, what do you think about the draft service recommendations, it allowed them to see the difference, so there was a slider on the, what we call a story map, that kind of walks them through the recommendations, and we asked them a series of questions, what do you think overall, do you think they're good or bad, what works well, what doesn't work so well, and then just giving them lots of opportunities to, to provide feedback. This was the overall, we gave them multiple choice questions here, overall, do you think that, how do you feel about these changes? And it was about 90% said they think they're good changes, or they're not quite sure, but they think they're good. So those are more positive comments, we got, we did get some comments that thought that, no, this is not what you should do, but was pretty overwhelmingly supportive of making changes along these lines. We also asked them about priorities for future improvements, and gave them a list of things, and things that we have heard from the surveys, from staff, from the riders, things that they were interested in, and gave them a list, and asked them to take that list and to rank them, and again, it really focused on frequency, so bringing back frequency on a couple of routes, they, people were responding pretty well to the on-demand zones, and thinking that those would be good, so those were kind of the next tier of improvements, and then bringing back some levels of service in other areas, so we'll, I'll walk you through some of these future priorities, but that was based largely on the survey, and from the feedback that we got from, from the community and from riders. So there's a lot of text on this, so I won't spend too much time, we did kind of compile them into sort of general feedback, what people like, and what are some improvements that they suggested as part of this, and some of the things that they liked were increasing frequency, again, we heard that kind of over and over and over again, more efficient use of resources, we did hear that from, you know, open-ended comments, people were saying that, they liked the on-demand service, they liked the directional, you know, the more-directed bidirectional service, and they, a lot of people wanted hours extended, they wanted service streamlined, they were talking about the new service in Wake Park and the new Transit Center in Wake Park, so those are things they liked, the improvements were kind of, were a little bit more related to if you're going to change things, so that means that I may not have access to the same level of service, or the same, or any service, or the service that I have today, so that is something that we need to consider, and we did make some changes related to some of the comments that we, that we got as part of the survey. People wanted service improved on weekends, that's kind of a national trend, but we are seeing that weekend ridership, years ago, used to not be as strong, now it's, you know, maybe just as strong as weekday service, and so, not quite, but it's getting there, and so people were more and more saying we'd like to see more service frequency on weekends. There were some comments related to, you know, low-income areas, particularly on the east side, so we made some changes, some recommendations, some modifications to the initial recommendations that we had. So we addressed a lot of those comments that we got in the survey, it was, that's really where the, the value of doing these surveys is, are the open-ended comments that we get directly from people. So I will walk you through the, these are kind of the primary themes, though I know that the map is probably a little bit hard for you to see all the detail, so I'll walk you through the themes here, this is in, this should be in your packet, so you should be able to see the details there, if you're not, again, feel free to ask questions, but what we did was focus on, the first thing was really about higher-frequency service, and what we did was say we'd like to focus on your, the major destinations in the region and those corridors that are connecting those regions, or those destinations. So identified, was it one, two, three, four, five, primary or core routes, and getting those routes back to 30-minute service, and doing that not, not throughout the week, but at least on weekdays to start. So again, we had, we had limited resources that we could use, we can't just say, oh, you have, you want to do it all, so we had to kind of pull it back, but these were the corridors, and this, these five corridors and these five routes connect your major destinations and the most of the ridership in the, in the region, and I've got a slide that shows some of this, and the effect of providing more frequent service. So that was the, that was the first theme. The second theme is kind of reducing some of the duplication on the outskirts of the region and streamlining service, again, focusing on where people are using the service and, and making it more direct and streamlining it. I'll call out one example here, which is the Route 6 on the east side, one of the things that we did is we extended it down to some apartments and then provided those folks a connection to a grocery store. So we streamlined it and connected routes in a slightly different way, but, but did it in a, rather than a loop and kind of a confusing loop, made it a little bit more streamlined and direct. So we did that through, on many parts of the region, and some places we didn't really change things, and there were, there are reasons why you're doing what you're doing because of the street network or whatever, so, but, but a lot of what we did do was kind of combine routes in different ways and reduce some duplication and streamline, and then, but also then connecting them back to those major destinations. So the, the new Western Transit Center into Crossroads, we created a new connection on the five, for example, so that's a new connection from St. Cloud State to Crossroads directly, without having to go downtown, so again, kind of focusing on getting rid of some of the duplication and creating new connections. We did then focus, of course, on those low-ridership areas, that's where a lot of service was being provided, but we weren't generating much ridership out of it, either because the, because of the alignment of the route, or maybe it was historic, maybe it's the way it was being provided, maybe there was better service on that route, but now there is not, and ridership was very low. And so what we did do was kind of consolidate and streamline, focus, and the other thing on this route, on this map in particular, if you can maybe see that there are these bubbles, these bubbles represent ridership, and so what we did was we tried to connect those major ridership locations and destinations in the region with the frequent service or with service that's connecting them back into the, the higher-frequency routes. So in doing that, there are some areas that will not have fixed route service that's as close to them, but most of the, most of the region, 95% of the region will have the same level of service, if not better, it's just doing it in a different way. So a lot of these folks will be able to walk to better and more bidirectional service or through a mobility device, so they will be able to get to those places, whereas, so we've kind of restructuring, streamlining, but that does mean there are some places that will not have the same level of service. So one of the pieces of the recommendations was also reintroducing some on-demand service, so I'm going to step back a little bit, I've got a different colored slide that kind of breaks it up a little bit, and talk about what is, what is on-demand service, what does that mean? It's also known as micro-transit service, for those of you maybe following the, what's going on in the industry, that's something that, some places call it as micro-transit, we're calling it on-demand, but basically, it's for general public, and it is like a taxi, it functions like Uber or Lyft, it's accessible, and those of you familiar with what was offered in Sartell, it's similar to that, but the trips are requested generally via an app, they're provided anywhere within that zone, the rides are often shared with other people, you want to be as efficient with that service as you can. The big difference, I would say, is that these trips can be scheduled same day, so these are something you could call up and there would be a response time, and you would say that, go, you call up or use the app, I guess, you could call, that is an option, but most people will probably book these trips through an app, and then, within a certain period of time, they would be able to get their trip. This is, these kinds of services are a lot more appropriate in low-density areas that are just really hard to serve with a fixed route bus. You can do it, but from what we've seen, and even from some of the, some of the existing service, they're just not generating ridership in those areas because it's very hard to do that. So, so these on-demand zones and the technology has really changed in the last, even just in the last three or four, five years, to allow these services to be much more efficient in these areas. So I already talked a little bit about the Western Transit Center, so I won't mention too much, other than to say that we did restructure the route network around that, so that was another piece of this. So those are the, the kind of short-term, what we're calling short-term recommendations and constraint to a kind of a reduced baseline funding level. But we also, based on the survey and also some of the other things that we learned from the surveys in, at the beginning of the project, from the riders and from the community, these are some of the things that are priorities, and there are different things that we would like to do, but we can't do right now, so these are what we're calling future priorities, and we've prioritized them based on what we've heard. So again, these are kind of frequency improvements, there's the Route 5, which is that new connection, it's not a new route, really, it's combining two routes, but it's providing a new connection to Crossroads, so that is really the top one, we heard that from many, many people on the survey, saying that's the first one to get back to 30-minute service. So focusing that, Route 4, there would be a little bit of a change here, we're suggesting in the future, that the 4 would be a more frequent service, would still go out and serve kind of the Ridgewood and the Westwood area, make that loop, but we think we can do that with an hourly service and then 30 minutes on the end part of that. In doing that, we're also suggesting a new crosstown connection, which would go up Veterans to County Route 120 and go to Central Care, so serving some of the, some parts of the region that are not currently served even by dialer rides, so this would be a new change, but it would be a new crosstown. That was another thing that we heard, is getting up to the Central Care, which provides a connection to Route 2 and to Walmart and Sartell, so there's a new connection there and that. a new connection there. And that we developed like, was a, those, those things combined provided something that we've heard a lot from folks is providing a crosstown service. And then there were two, kind of a little bit lower down on the priority list would be a couple of on-demand zones, both in South St. Cloud and in Sauk Rapids. Now, these are not defined. So if you're looking at the boundaries, those would need to be more clearly defined. They're kind of just meant to show you that these are areas that we feel like could respond well to an on-demand service. Those are sort of in the middle level of the highest priority. And then the next couple of changes would be on the south side of St. Cloud. And so getting, what, what we have now is a, in the constrained version, is a single route that splits off and goes down 33rd. What we're suggesting is that in, if there's, if there are additional resources, that you split those into two separate routes and you provide hourly service on, on both of them. And the shared segments would be 30 minutes. So you're kind of creating another higher frequency corridor there. And you'd have the 5 too, which would be a 30-minute service. So you're getting a lot of service between downtown and the, and the university as well, which has some of the highest ridership in the system still. The other things sort of in the medium and the lowest priority would be a new, new service. And we're suggesting that maybe you could start out with maybe three trips a day to Opportunity Drive. And there's a lot of jobs there. We worked out a lot. Is it a top priority? Probably not. But we do feel like some kind of service there could be very beneficial and connecting folks back into the network. And then some of the other priorities would just be adding additional service. So service on the weekdays, both in the, in the morning and in the evening. So we've got those costed out as separate improvements. And then we have additional service on the weekends. Again, costed out as, as separate. So this is in the draft report. I know it's probably, it could take 30 minutes to get through this description. But basically, what, what this is, is that you've got this reduced baseline service. So back in 2017, you were operating more service and then, of course, the pandemic hits. Right? So service has been reduced coming down to kind of when we were starting this service or this, this study. So that's been our baseline is where we've kind of, it's actually in some ways has been a good way to, to sort of reset and to say, okay, here's, here's where we're at. This is the, this is the, the planning level that we started with in terms of the service. And that's what we showed you, those like initial service recommendations. And then those future priorities, what we're saying is that over time, as funding becomes available, you start to build that system backup. So, so we didn't specify exactly when those things would happen. What we really wanted to do was to focus on how can you get to kind of a reduced, within that reduced baseline funding level, what are some of the short-term recommendations? So that's what we've done. That's how the plan is kind of structured. And as Dave mentioned, this is something that can be used over time. And you can implement them as you are able to. But we didn't want to start out saying, here's this, here's the start. You're at the baseline and this is what you've got to do to make this whole thing work. We started it out at this, at this lower level. These are some of the things that we wanted to illustrate that show the difference and the changes in terms of the number of people that have access to better service and the number of jobs that have access to better service. So the number of people that have access to service is about four times what it is now in terms of 30-minute service. So the population with, this is within the short-term recommendations. Again, the population will have much, many more people have access to 30-minute service. There will be a slight decline, I will say, in the number of people that have access to service. So that, within a constrained scenario. But the number of jobs, this is, I think, is important to emphasize, the number of jobs that have access to service, that 30-minute service, that more frequent connections, that people say they, that is one of the top priorities for that, is, like, no, it's, it's much higher. So about half of the service or half of the jobs in the region will now have access to 30-minute service as opposed to what it was before, or in a reduced scenario. So then we did the same thing for the short-term recommendations, plus all of the future priorities. And this is where you can see that the number of people with access to service and the number of jobs continues to grow. And, and the number of people that have access to better service continues to grow. I think this is my last slide before our next steps, and then I will open it up for questions. This is basically implementation of the plan. So there's still other things that Metro Bus will need to do to take the recommendations in the, in the long-range plan and actually roll them out on the street. So we've kind of outlined those things here very, at a high level, which is basically to finalize some of the route details, make sure that buses can make turns where they, where we think they can, do field validation, time, et cetera. And then we will develop schedules. So naturally, and trip assignment. So how are those schedules? How are people actually going to be driving these, these new services? There's a lot of engagement, I think, that should happen related to some of these changes with either a rider working group or something like that. Also coordinating with, with members of the board and with other member jurisdictions as some of these changes are happening in the plan. There's a lot of passenger information to update in terms of print and digital. There's stop locations and shelter locations that would need to be modified for the new network. And, and then it kind of moves into training, training staff, distributing information, kind of getting everything ready. And then what we're, what we're anticipating now is that grand opening or, or calling grand opening would be sort of in 2026. And we're not sure exactly, probably early to mid 2026. And then after that, you want to monitor that service, make adjustments. There will be things that will need to be updated as you go along. But yeah, and then that's kind of an ongoing thing. And that will happen as, you know, over the coming years and as you start to build in some of those future priorities. So our next steps are really to incorporate whatever comments you have into a final plan. The, and as I mentioned, a final review of routes, timing, scheduling, run-cutting, those will all happen next. And those are part of our base contract. And then, and then it's really the implementation tasks. And it's taking the plan and it's moving it and getting it ready for operation on the streets. So I think that's all I've got. So any comments or questions? And then we'll stop sharing. We'll start with.
All right. Well, let me keep it on here. And if I need to go back to any slide, I will keep that.
Sure.
Sure. I just have a question with regards to the Western Transit Center that's in Wake Park. And where specifically is it located?
Yeah, it's at Second and Sun Dial.
You know, when you turn up Second towards Macausa?
Oh, there.
Right there in the corner. So at the corner of where, where you would be going to Macausa.
Or the sign out there, you can't.
Used to be a brewery. There still is. And they're trying to move that and putting it in school. But right on that road, right?
Thank you.
It's right across from Macausa, too, I think.
There's a house there now, right? You bought that property. Is there a house?
Yeah, there's a big sign. And the house is still there, like a little, like a maintenance shed.
You have a Metro Bus sign up?
Yeah, it's a huge sign. Yeah.
Just park a bus there.
Yeah, park a bus there.
I had a question. Is, is there going to be any cost analysis along with this implementing this plan? Are we going to be adding buses, personnel, drivers, support staff? I have all kinds of questions when it comes to cost. I haven't seen anything on cost. It's hard to make a decision when you don't see the money.
Yeah. Well, we're not making a decision right now.
No, I know that. But I mean, is there going to be, are they going to provide it? Who's going to provide that for us as we do the implementation, the different steps?
Yeah, once we, once we have an idea of which direction we want to go, then we'll put everything together and then we'll bring it to the board.
Okay.
If a discussion, just like what we did last time, and we went through the five-year study, or I'd say seven years ago.
Okay.
And we did that. And we had the phase one, phase two, phase three, and we had the dial amount associated for each. So it'll be the same process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
I assume, based on, I assume based on what he, what's laid out with those implementation, you've already factored that in because those output, future implementations are probably just restrained by finances anyway. So, so you're already looking at what potentially the budget would be for the next five years and what you could potentially do.
Do or not do.
And then the decision would have to be by the board.
So what he built right now, that's in front of us right now, is a cost-neutral perspective from what we're operating right now.
For short-term.
The short-term.
The short-term.
Did you say cost-neutral?
Cost-neutral. And that's, that's based on 81% of full service. So, so what he's building right now is built based on reduced service that we've been operating since COVID started, which means kind of in some ways. So we were very deliberate about not giving back any of those additional hours or miles to say, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. So we don't want you to take those away because then we have to apply for additional resources. So we are very careful about making sure that MINDOT understood we're not giving that 19% back. And we haven't removed it from any of our systems. So what we can do, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Paul, but well, at, at a certain point, depending upon what we decide, what's going to be phase two, what's going to be phase three, what's going to be phase four, we've still got 19%, in theory, 19% to work with, to where we could add in some of these other priorities that are listed on there, whether that's two years down the road, whether that's a year down the road, three years, whatever that looks like. Again, kind of, I'm envisioning it as like an, like an evaluation stage, right? You evaluate what you're doing. Meanwhile, you're adding additional things. And so you're constantly doing this evolution of what you're currently doing, but also implementing new stuff and continuing that piggyback over however long we have till we get to kind of a final implementation. But did I, did I misspeak on any of that, Paul?
No, I think that was, was exactly, I would say.
Perfect.
Yeah. And I think just to add to the cost thing, that was, we did estimate, thinking about those few, the future system, we did estimate what, what would be the impact in terms of revenue hours, vehicles, and that can be translated into operators. And so that is, that does need to be, that's accounted for in terms of what we, what we estimated for those, for the, for each of those individual items. And that's why we wanted to kind of break them down so that you can take them and you don't have to do it all at once. We didn't want to create a plan that was, sort of tied your hands and said, you have, you have to do this all or it's not going to work. We wanted to start out with that baseline and say, this is something that restructures the system to some degree, puts frequency where it's important and then can be added to. And sort of creating that foundation.
Only thing I'd say is I'm happy to see demand service come back to Sartell. We've flip-flopped that a couple of times. And I think stability there will create demand. So.
Yeah. Paul, this is Gary Corrigan. Got a question on that. So Dave was talking about, you know, the initial plan would be mainly cost-neutral. Is that, any addition or incorporation of microtransit service, is that part of that cost-neutral plan?
Yeah, yeah. So we are assuming that there's, there are costs associated with that. And that would be, even though they may be in a different cost center ultimately, they, we still accounted for that. So yes, when we go back to, I'll go back to the short-term recommendations here. This is probably, this is probably a good one. So yeah, these, even though it is on-demand service and is more like dialer ride, we did account for this as part of the, kind of a fixed route bucket. So.
Well, I think, and that, and that's good because then now, now it is system-wide, so it looks better. So you'll have on-demand in other areas and you'll have the future piece. I think, I, I like the overall plan. And that question I have is, when you did the recommendations, you did the survey, obviously, and you did, you have a pretty good ridership percentage. When you did the survey of the recommendations, were your response rates pretty similar and good response rate? I mean, your numbers are good. But are, were the response rates similar to the initial?
Yeah, it was, so we did, we did three surveys. The first two were in 2023. One was of the riders. We got about 500 responses from the riders. And then we did another community survey, which is an online survey, and we got about 116 surveys. The second survey that we did, which was the, which was of the recommendations to get feedback on that, was about the same as the first community survey, about 168 people. Which typically what we see for those kinds of surveys, because they're, they're, they're more complicated, they take more time to, to think about, we tend to see more, fewer responses. So the fact that we got the same that we got the first time shows that, A, people knew about it. And I will say, the number of people that were just added their comments in there, took the time to review it and to really think about it and to put their comments in there, shows that there was probably better, I would say, probably better participation in the second one, in some ways, than the first one. Because there's something to react to, even though it takes longer. So yeah, I know that answers the question, but that was.
No, it did, I just was just curious on, because obviously they have something, it's easy to get your input, but it's, if you actually have something that's going to affect the day-to-day transportation of those folks, that's what I'd be more concerned about, that survey. I know you're going to always have that small percentage. You're not going to like anything but done. But your numbers were pretty high, which is, which is good. Because I mean, obviously, I would hope that, you know, we'd have greater ridership and then focus on fares and as you go forward, more, more views. I really like the fact that you're going to have shorter, I mean, given that goal of a half hour. I mean, who wants to wait an hour or an hour and a half to pick up? You know, you could walk most of these routes in the, in that area. But having frequency, I think, is probably more of a concern too than anything else. And, and I like the fact too, that you've got a higher percentage of those to where jobs are. That really, and that, that's a lot easier for, you know, for, I think, probably all of us to talk about our, you know, the fact that we're all part of the, you know, this and we all, and we don't, we don't improve individually from our cities with the living authority, knowing that this is going to bring people to, to work. So, which is good. I think, I mean, that's a nice piece of it. I don't know. Is there, do you need, you need the approval on this overall plan today? And then, and then obviously, everything that is implemented requires individual approval, budget ratios.
Any additional budgetary, so a motion to approve today, on and forward with it? And then any additional budgetary impacts that would be above and beyond what we've already got budgeted would be brought forward?
Motion to approve.
Motion approves there. Second. And then we're, is part of your motion, the Wake Park pays for all the increases?
Yes, absolutely.
That's right. So you're not hearing this. Oh, yeah.
And cost of the west side facility as well.
Yeah. Getting your course, Rick. All right. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, curious. That's adopted. Thank you very much for all the work. And that's a great, great presentation too.
Thank you so much.
With that, there's seen other items on the agenda. Nothing else before the board. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So vote.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. And seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, we are adjourned at 4:50.